And Mr. Lambert, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome to the Citrus Planning Board, Thursday, February 9, 2023. The House has selected one hearing room. The Citrus Planning Board is committed to providing an environment of respect to your meetings. We ask all members to interact with polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community, and while all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit in these studies to support and respect our community. And this report is being reported in street live by Facebook, and I think you see all the records. The general public is welcome to a full view as we do whatever. We have opposed to be rejected. Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
First up, at 6:30 PM, we have a discussion and a vote on a surety reduction of Curtis Estates. Who is here to represent Curtis Estates, please? Raise your hand.
I am a Curtis Estate member.
Curtis Estates Dodge.
I'm Mrs. Callahan.
Mr. Maravino, you there?
See you.
I don't believe Mr. Maravino is there. That was what, here comes Paul. Yep, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. This is Paul Maravino from Grady Consulting, representing the applicant of Wellbe Builders. I did receive the list from the board that was put together by Peter Palmary. And I've gone through the list. There's only two items that we have an issue with. One is the trees. There's a total item of $7,000 for the trees. And the other is the concrete bounds. It's a total of $6,975. All of the trees have been installed. There's actually a total of 27 trees and 15 pine trees that have been installed. The concrete bounds have all been installed. We've also installed the, all the monuments at the rear property lines of each lot. Having said that, I took the two aligned items of $7,600, $6,975. I added those and multiplied them by 20%. And we're asking that the board would would reduce the bond from the $69,161 in Peter's report down to a total of $53,000. And again, that's because the trees have been installed and the concrete bounds have been installed as well. The other items would be completed probably in the next three to six months, weather permitting. We have completed all of our plans, the ASBILs, which should be submitted to the town once this work is done and probably at some point this, the applicant would file for a street acceptance. My understanding is that when the petition is filed for a street acceptance, either the planning board and/or the DPW would go out and look at the project site again, if there's some remaining work to be done prior to street acceptance that would occur at that time. But for purposes of this evening's discussion, we're asking that the board would reduce the bond down to a total of $53,000. That because of the, again, the bounds have been installed and the trees have been installed to date. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, I have a lot of care. Do you want to start first?
Peter Palmary went out to the site and he reviewed, he looked at the site. I stand by his estimate. The ASBIL has not been submitted, and there's steps before you go to street acceptance that have to be done. So, and the ASBIL is part of that, prior to street acceptance. So, I don't recommend that the board reduce it. As a matter of fact, indeed, if the developer decided to walk, I talked to DPW, and this could not be done for this price with prevailing wage. So, it would, I mean, Sean McCarthy estimated it would at least be $75,000.
How much do they have currently insured?
There's a $250,000 bond. The bond expires, the bond has to be renewed on February 23rd, which is why, you know, you had to have the estimate and everything before the February 23rd date.
Mr. Maravino, I am going to give my two cents, and other people can try, and we have people from the HOA who are here. I have to tell you that homeowners, I am inclined to give any reduction of surety for the simple fact it is the only control mechanism that we have to make sure that the work is done. We went out to Curtis Estates. I can't tell you how often. We have multiple issues out there which may have something to do with us or not. As often as we tell the homeowners that their issue was with the developer, they come to the planning board because we're here, they can talk to us, we listen, and we try to get some kind of resolution. That's all I'm going to say right now. I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Pritchard?
No, I'm not inclined to take anybody's recommendation. This was already proposed here, and it's based on that. You know, frankly, if there's any question that we couldn't accomplish this with this kind of money, then I would just put a big plus factor on it. Basically, you know, whether we reduce it at all or not, I guess I'm sort of in between on that one. But I'm not anywhere near reducing $50,000. I'd say it still has to have six digits to it.
What's?
Yes, in terms of the trees, there seems to be discrepancy between the peer review and whoever gave the call. So, when were these planted and installed, when were these trees installed?
Mr. Maravino?
I believe they were put in last fall.
From our expert, I would rely on our experts' orders. Right.
He went out there after some trees were installed, but I mean, he looked at the, he was relying on looking at out in the field and at this partial ASBIL that he was providing.
Right.
So, you know, I think we need to go with our engineer's recommendations.
Right, and that's the information that was available at the time. I think the one thing is, we have absolutely, as a town, zero interest in finishing this work for the developer. So, I don't want to be in any position to say that the developer could walk away and leave the town having to try to implement this, regardless of whether we have insurance or not, right? This is just extra work for somebody and extra liability, and this is developer's responsibility. So, I would err on the high side all the time.
Mr. Maravino?
Like yourself, I've been out there at times that I can't think of. And I'm not impressed with this substitution at all. And I would err on the side of, well, I can understand that the $250,000 is whatever. I would not go lower than $100,000 in this discussion.
Now, this is not a public hearing, but I do see people from Curtis Estates here. I would be willing to educate any doubts that you would have yourself. Could you come up with a question?
Yes. William Smith, I have a question. So, Paul, I assume you're there?
I'm here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Mine isn't Sorry. And mine isn't, my question's not really of a financial nature. I'm just, we just want to get, the residents would like to get the project finished. And about a year ago, well, it was probably last spring, we're going to finish up in the fall. And that's come and gone. We've done a road, we've done some sidewalks. I had assumed we're going to finish up in the spring, but since the road and the sidewalks have been put in, I don't know what may have been done, if anything. There are several things that aren't, I know the landscaping couldn't do with the winter, but there were several other items that could be done. And I'd like to know if you could tell us the stats, like the status of the light poles. They're bought, they're at a supply house.
It's my understanding that they have purchased the poles, but they aren't up yet. The, I believe the bases are in, but that's one of the items that the planning board's engineer has listed in his items of work to be done, the streetlights, the street to go in. The bases are in, but the poles are not in.
Well, there's no, well, there's no concrete in the bases, but the point is, if they're ordered and they have them, that's something they could do that tomorrow, though, right?
It's my understanding that they don't have them yet. The bases are in there and they're waiting for them. That, you know, again, they're spelled out in this list of items of work that are remaining to be done on the project. There's a total of 10 that was listed in the engineer's report that fell with the planning board. And
I appreciate you saying, I'm just, I'm trying to get to the fact, is something, is there some progress being made to do it? I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say is it on a list financially or not on a list.
Yes.
I'm just asking, how are we going to finish up in the spring if we in fact don't have the materials to finish the work?
Well, he doesn't have the poles today. I'm not sure when he's going to get them. I did speak to the owner earlier today, and he does want to clean this list up so he can move on and put the road up for street acceptance. Again, you know, the reason for this list, sir, was so the planning board had their own engineer go out and review the entire project and have him come up with a list of work items that still remain to be done. And yes, the three streetlights are one of those items that's in the list. And that's included in the amount of work that is, I mean, in the amount of money that's required to finish the project.
I want to make one thing clear, okay? This is just based on what you have to, the ASBILs have not been reviewed. So, that's a big, that's a big question mark too, and that really hasn't been accounted for totally in the estimate.
Okay, Karen, we have the ASBIL plans done. I'd be happy to give you the copy. The reason I didn't give them to you because we finished setting the bounds last week. And Peter's letter came in, I think, on the 31st of January. And because of the weather, we finished the bounds last week, and when we did that, we finished the ASBILs. We have a total of five sheets which we can submit to you.
I want the ASBILs if it's not done. If all the stuff isn't on what's supposed to be on the ASBIL, then I don't want the ASBIL.
Like, the definition wouldn't be an ASBIL.
Right. No, it's not an ASBIL.
The other thing I might interject here, we have been, after the developer, time and time again, to get certain things done. And you, sir, are absolutely right. It was supposed to be done in summer, it was supposed to be done in fall, and now we're in mid-winter, and now we're talking about the spring. I'm sorry, I don't trust them at all. This has been an ongoing issue for the last three years, and it's time to pay the piper.
So, if I could continue or just add a couple of things. Paul, there's a couple of other items that aren't really related to the landscaping, which is related to the winter. But for instance, the sign that's been discussed for some time, do you know if that is in fact under being made, like by a sign vendor? Is anything happening with that?
Which sign are you referring to?
Yeah, the entrance sign, sorry.
The stop sign or?
No, the entrance sign.
I
The Curtis Estates sign.
Yeah. I don't have any information on that. And it's, that's not something listed in the engineer's report. The only sign he listed were the stop signs. Other than that, I can't answer your question.
Yeah, so, but
I approved it. I approved it.
Okay, good. So, is it being made?
I approved it. That's all I know.
No, I, that was sort of a ball.
I don't know. I had to ask the owner that question.
Please.
Okay, sorry.
Well, that being said, Mr. Maravino, I'm going to take that we not reduce any of the surety that it stands at, what is it, Karen?
$250,000.
$250,000 that you need to have renewed by the 23rd, right?
Right.
You know, can you read what?
Wait a minute.
What's that?
I don't know. Karen has more.
Well, I mean, this motion was written to, to accept his request on behalf. I, you know, if we're going to not reduce the surety, I have to change the motion.
We're going to have to change that. Well, let me, I take this for a vote. And those who are in favor to keep the surety at $250,000, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous. So, the surety unfortunately is not going to be reduced by Curtis Estates so that we can at least make sure that we see some forward motion. Thank you.
Pat, for purposes of discussion, what was the purpose of the exercise to have your engineer go out and come up with a list of the remaining work items? And also come up with the cost to finish the work of $69,000? I mean, how do you come up with $250,000 if your engineer's telling you the cost to finish the work is $69,000? That's a very big spread.
One moment. Mr. Maravino, do you have a response to that? I'm going to trade over to Karen.
Well, the applicant requested a surety reduction. So, we have, we put it out to our engineer to go out and do an estimate. It doesn't mean that the board has to grant the surety reduction, and they're voting that they don't want to grant the surety reduction because they want a good faith effort to finish the project.
Well, the good faith effort would be the $69,161.
We had a meeting on August 11th where we talked among other things about things like streetlights, where you said bases are in, you know, and you had trouble locating the conduits. And where you said the game plan was to put in the light poles. It's February 9th of 2023, six months later, and not a single thing has happened since then. And I would say that's just evidence of, you know, no matter what you say here, we're going to wait until you show us you're going to finish this job.
Then you can get the surety back.
Well, Steve, in the last six months, they've installed the sidewalks, the finished course, the trees, and the bounds.
Good. You only have another half to go and you'll be done.
No, but the point I'm making is your engineer went out there at your request, and he came up with a list and the cost of the remaining items of work. And the items that you just mentioned have been completed. And he's
So, they have.
No, they haven't.
They have not.
He's come up with the cost of $69,000 to finish the project. And the board wants to keep the $250,000.
That's right. We do. We do, and we will.
And the only thing I'm saying is, the cost to finish the project is not $250,000. So, again, on behalf of the applicant, I'm asking that the board, at a minimum, reduce it to what your engineer came up with.
Mr. Maravino, this is the only way that we have to ensure that the job is done. And if you feel that it is a little harsh, unfortunately, that's going to fall on your shoulders for not doing what you told us you were going to do. I'm sorry about that, if you feel that that's glorious, but that's the way it's going to be. We have decided that we are not going to reduce surety.
I move that we retain surety for Curtis Estates development at $250,000 until all of the items in question are done to the planning board's satisfaction.
Karen, can you give us a date of when they have to renew that, please? What do you mean?
They have, the bond renews on the 23rd is what Mr. Sharon told me. So, they will have to, you know, I will be checking to make sure it's paid. Right there.
Second? Do you have a second?
Is there a second?
I would I would suggest a different approach.
Okay.
Only because we don't need to lay out any plans. I would just suggest that the motion be denied for reduction of surety.
Okay.
End of story, right?
That sounds better.
And, you know, they're welcome to come back and demonstrate that they've done a lot of things, and maybe that will change something down the road. But I just feel like we've had this, we had this exact same conversation six months ago.
Yeah.
We have it every six months. I'll second Steve's motion.
As am I.
As am I.
Is there a second?
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Maravino. We're moving along. Next on our list is 6:50 PM, a discussion and a vote for stormwater. For swimming pool with seven cold brick circle. Everyone, if you'd like to start us off on this, please.
And I need to refuse myself.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the
We're just getting to add the on board here.
Okay.
Somebody come get me when we're done. I will come back. Thank you.
So, the, when I asked the board a while ago, what we wanted, I said that seven cold brick wanted to put in a pool. You said we wanted to follow the same procedure that we did for five cold brick. So, I basically have solicited the applicant to have plans submitted and engineering peer review to know if the stormwater standards could be met. And so, that's what I have done to date. So, I will let, I think Jen Hannan is the applicant's engineer. He should be able to explain the project to you. Let's let him explain it, and then I'll go into further detail.
Mr. Hannan, are you there, please?
Sure. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? Jen Hannan with Atlantic Coast Engineering.
Yes, we hear you, Jennifer.
Okay, great. Thank you, Karen. Should I share my screen, or do you guys have the screen up there with the drawing, the proposed drawing?
You can share.
If you're going to point to something.
You can share your screen, Jennifer. I made you a co-host, so you can go and share.
Okay, great. Will do. Thank you. Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, let me zoom in a little more. Okay, so as the board is probably very aware at this point with the whole history, the HOA covenants at this particular subdivision had in the covenants that there were no pools allowed unless stormwater mitigation took place because of the max lot coverage percentage threshold. So, you know, we were hired by the homeowner after number five cold brick circle because they desired to want to put in a swimming pool. So, as Karen mentioned, you know, we went through the stormwater design process. We did three test pits which are shown on the plans. The whole project was peer reviewed by Merrill Engineering. We're proposing three cul-de-sacs, which you can see, they're the blue rectangular stormwater structures. One at the front right of the lot, and then one in the back left, and then one on the right side. The soil test pit data is shown over on the right-hand side. Let me just scroll down a little bit, which you can see. We went through a pretty exhaustive peer review with the engineer from Merrill. So, if we scroll down here to the bottom left corner, it's kind of the data. But before I do that, I'll just explain where the proposed pool is going. Where the family would like to put the pool is in the back, sort of the back right corner of the lot. It complies with setbacks. It's outside the 100-foot wetlands buffer that would have Conservation Commission jurisdiction. So, we're outside the 100-foot buffer for everything that's proposed, to include the cul-de-sacs. So, basically, the way we designed this system is such that the roof runoff, which currently discharges out onto the property into the driveway, which is essentially overland flow, we're proposing to discharge it into cul-de-sacs below grade to recharge into the groundwater table. So, if you look at the data down here, under the lot coverage area, the existing impervious at the site is, at least according to our survey data, and I know it varies from when the house was first built, but it's, the existing is 3,707 square feet. With the added pool and patio, it's 4,509 square feet. So, we're adding 802 square feet of impermeable, which I put in red here. Can everybody see that? Okay. And then what we're doing is, we're proposing to mitigate the entire roof runoff, which is 3,294 square feet. So, it's a net decrease in impervious of 2,492. You know, the inverse of that is it's an increase of pervious of 2,492 square feet. So, it's a significant improvement in terms of the stormwater mitigation. So, it's very much overdesigned. It's been very, very much reviewed by Merrill. We've addressed all their peer review comments on the engineering, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I just have a general question about this subdivision in general. We have a lot of things that are built. On this, possibly, we have two decks and a hot tub and a patio, which we don't know anything about. But I just want to send out to everybody who had extraneous information and no one as respondent. So, somebody from the HOA would like to hear what is going on with that issue. Again, I feel like they're asking for forgiveness instead of permission. I know that the request here is that we want us to talk about whether they're allowed. Right. So, Karen, why don't you pick up what we talked about?
Addition, I mean, so in addition to the pool, they also put in a hot tub and a patio and a second deck. The deck is impervious without the planning board exceeding their impervious allotment. So, that was exceeded. And then now with the proposed pool, it's further exceeded. But the mitigation will handle all the increased impervious area. There's enough roof area that they can accommodate all of the increased impervious area that's got on the site. So, the board is going to have to decide, do you want to let them have a pool? Do you want to let, do you want to issue a stormwater permit? I could do it administratively, or do you want to require them to have a public hearing? What's the board, the board has to make some decisions here. Certain amount of impervious area was added without permission, and now they're coming back because they want more in the form of a pool than what Certain amount of impervious area was added without permission and now they're coming back because they want more in the form of proposed pool and walkway around the pool. Would you need a walkway around a pool if you're gonna have a pool?
So, we have a stormwater plan here, so don't take care of the real deep bits. So, for me, if they were not gonna put the pool in, it would be no mitigation, correct? And they would have exceeded their...
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's a huge issue for us right there is that, um, when they built this plan of Mr. Maravito, or anybody else who's still online, this flexible open space had a lot of limitations which, um, I don't think any of the homeowners make minus one understands the pervious versus the impervious situation here. I am concerned that they went ahead and put things in and exceeding what they are allowed. Um, I don't know if this is always gonna have to come back to the planning board on the H O A, but I, I don't know how that this is gonna resolve. But between the three of us, we need to decide with all this mitigation, if they can have another pool like right next to one of the other one, right? I thought that we had one film that they were all supposed to move on to. No? Didn't they tell us that? No?
They do a community pool.
A community pool, yeah. So, Mr. Pritchard asked for a water man.
Uh, questions for you, a few questions here. The existing column, is that the new existing or is that the old existing?
That's the new existing.
What does the old existing look like? What was the impervious for the...
The impervious requirement that they were not supposed to exceed was three, two, five, one.
So, they're only five hundred over that in this existing. So, this is really thirteen hundred.
Correct, correct, correct.
And the locations of the proposed cul-de-sac chambers. Uh, I see there, they appear to be, uh, close particularly on the pool side, close to the proper line. What's, what's on the other side? Is there anything that it would impact on the other side, other property line? Is there septic system there, anything like that?
No, this one, this one has the big shared septic system that the flood to the property.
Okay, so there's nothing, we've looked at the neighbors. What happens if this thing? Does this thing always infiltrate? I guess is my question. Or will this overflow?
Ask Mr. Hannan.
Uh, that's kind of what I've asked him.
Mr. Hannan, can you answer that question?
Uh, sure. So, uh, the, the stormwater mitigation design system, um, it's designed in compliance with, you know, D E P regulations, um, or significantly, you know, mitigating the, the stormwater on the property. Um, and it meets the requirements of the situat stormwater bylaw. Um, you know, the only situation where we'd have an issue is, you know, if you have, for example, significant amount of rain and then, you know, a freezing event, um, and you'd have overland flow which would, you know, discharge rain event if the ground was frozen, for example, out to the, um, the cul-de-sac, which would then go into the catch basins in theory, which is really what happens now. Um, so, you know, based on the soil test pit data and the, the perk, the perk rates, um, and the HydroCAD system we use, it, you know, it meet all, meets all the requirements of, to, to basically, um, discharge the runoff into the groundwater table. So, it's a significant improvement overall.
So, that would happen in the case of a hundred year storm as well?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I think in total, not speaking to the sort of ask for forgiveness or permission issue, in total, the recharge to groundwater is much preferred from the roof, right? And that was a similar issue with respect to the last pool that was proposed as well.
Correct.
That's true.
So, you know, I, I would say that at least, um, we're gaining additional recharge to the groundwater. Uh, that would be some, I mean, if we didn't have any way of really getting a significant benefit out of this, that wouldn't be favorable to it. But it feels to me like there is a significant benefit here in terms of groundwater recharge. That's what I would say.
Um, I, I agree with Steve and I think that that, uh, line of thinking is consistent with how we handled this last time. Um, so, I guess I'm inclined to allow this. I still am very much disappointed at how things have been progressing with all these little projects that go under the radar. But at this juncture, there's too much we can do about that aside from what we do, find out about it, stick to kind of that engineering best practice and the bylaws of our municipality, which we're trying to do and be consistent about. So, in that case, I think that, um, it's, it's acceptable to me and I also don't, and the topic of having a full stormwater, uh, public hearing, I guess, I, I don't see the necessity in that as far as I don't understand what modifications or changes might, uh, come from that. So, I, I'm okay with this being a administrative, with you.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you a little bit. I don't want to be real benefit to going through another process here.
No, and I, and I agree as well. So, Karen, we're asking to write a stormwater...
All right, so the stormwater permit that will be issued will be nearly identical except for, um, some changed stuff to buy. Nearly identical to all, all the stormwater permits we have.
Which includes an inspection, what gets installed. So, it would have to spread.
Yes, yes, bottom, bottom of chambers get, get inspected, yep.
Okay.
That's the most important inspection, bottom of chambers. So, we know that the assumptions in the stormwater calculations are...
They also, just by the way, they also address the argument.
Yes, they have, um, this one submitted, um...
Make its point.
Yeah, which I, I attached to the stormwater permit.
Okay.
Mr. Ross said we are in favor of making a stormwater permit, which Karen will...
Do we need a motion?
Motion, yeah. If you wanna do just a motion that, to issue a stormwater permit, I don't know if there's anybody who wants to talk on that. Is there anybody on, in here or online? Mr. Hannan, could you read me your graphic, please?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Could you take down your graphic, please?
Oh, absolutely.
I've stopped hearing the screen. Is there anybody on the line that would like to make a statement, please? If somebody's here, they don't want us to know that you're there.
I don't see any.
We don't, hello, 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 did you leave the meeting?
There you go.
There we go.
I don't see any hand raised.
All right, so I guess I'll forward a motion there, Karen. Mr. Joseph, write a stormwater permit. Are they putting the language to be done through a meeting schedule, we give to play what else?
Thank you.
On favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our discussion or vote for our reports to town meeting. We all should have a little package. Oh, just sort of run up and get the influences. So, I gave a couple of drafts for the reports to town meeting. Um, if everybody's okay with them, then we could just, uh, go to, uh, go to sign them. I'm applying. Do we need to read these, Karen or Ross? Up to you, I don't, I mean, you can read them, um...
All right.
I need to choose it all. Yes. Good job. All right, so somebody just said move to sign the reports to town meeting. Move to sign reports to town meeting.
Thank you.
On favor.
Aye.
All right, so the next item is the M D T A Community Section three A Compliance. Uh, we submitted the action plan on January thirty-first. And my new action plan is always subject to change. So, it, it was submitted in a timely manner. It took a couple of day, we're supposed to get a PDF immediately. We did not get the P, PDF, so two days later, I was able to connect with D H C D and, um, express some of my opinions on three A compliance. And I was able to actually get our, um, our PDF. Basically, we're gonna have...
What is the PDF?
Uh, you couldn't, you couldn't take, they had, it's something, a record of what we submitted. You can't edit it.
You can't really print it. You know how we print it out, the action plan and the other everything.
So, you were, you were talking about a PDF of what you thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, you know, situat is highly on D H C D's radar, um, is what I was told. Um, I expressed concern about this three A compliance because, you know, situat's a town that has salt marshes, flood claims, zone A's, zone two's, limited sewer, limited water, and you can't make new land. Plus, we found out that our N D T V district is not going to comply because it has a pedestrian front itself. Which is sound planning and what, what I was told, you're preaching to the choir, but that's not what the law says. Who named this law? Our legislators, so, you know, um, so, M A P C ran our compliance model and basically what it finds is to be able to comply, we have to change some zoning districts, which we kind of assumed we would have to change some zoning districts. Well, if you look at the numbers, it's basically saying that if we do the N R N, G B C, and G W B districts and we increase the density to seventeen dwelling units per acre by right, we're gonna get a right, we're gonna get the twelve hundred thirty-nine units. Because it kind of, you have to have a little bit of an increased density because it kind of subtracts for the land area that you can't use. It doesn't, if we go fifteen units per acre by right, we come out under, um, and running their model, if they, they did it with seventeen dwelling units per acre, we come up exactly to twelve hundred thirty-nine units, the number that we're supposed to zone for. So, I think that we need to think about that and determine if that's what we want to proceed with, start, starting to change the zoning for a fall town meeting. Going, there's a couple of places we have to change the districts to because in our model, we made some assumptions. You can't have boundaries split. We have a couple of properties that had split boundaries, so we have to move them all into one district. They made the same assumptions. We told them where we, we, we made the split districts and we put which district we put it in, they made the same assumptions. So, it was putting it into the N R N district, um, for at least one parcel. But it involves going with a, uh, an increased dwelling in this break. You know, in some of our districts, we, the G W B allows multifamily by special permit, not as a right either. This is supposed to be as a right. So, that's gonna need some consideration. So, I...
So, um, can you, so what is the list of things we have to change that, that you're suggesting that need to be changed? And then what's the practical reality of building that in terms of what gets, could get built on the ground?
To, to be able to comply, we have to change the density. So, we know we have to change the density.
From what to what?
In some cases, we're at twelve units per acre by right. They're suggesting we change it to seventeen dwelling units per acre by right. In the...
In some cases and in other cases? I'm just trying to understand.
In every, in, in all the cases in Green Bush, it's twelve acres, it's twelve units per acre by right. And then in the G W B dis, sub-district in Green Bush, we don't allow multifamily by right. We require a special permit for that. As Seven and Driftwood got a special permit to do their project.
We would have to change that.
We, we would.
So, we have to change two things there. We have to change the density and the as of right, right, versus special permit. And how many units would that currently allow versus what we would then go to? I'm trying to understand the implication if, if we change all that.
Right.
What does it start to look like, right? What, what does it start to feel like?
Um, if you go to the bottom of that memo on page, page seven, it kind of gives you some numbers.
Page seven.
Page seven, you know, they ran, they didn't, they didn't run, we know that twelve isn't giving us the number. Um, so, they did alternative testing. They tried fifteen units per acre in each sub-district. And you can see the numbers they come up with. They don't come up with, they came up with one thousand and ninety-seven units.
Well, they came up with...
And we need twelve thirty-nine, right?
Correct, correct.
So, in the G W B district, we have to be at two twenty-seven.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And what is it currently allowed?
Um, I don't know if we have those numbers. I've, I've, I haven't...
But it's twelve, right? Instead of seventeen, it's twelve, right?
Right, it's twelve, right. I mean, we can talk, we can have another conversation. Shari and I can pull those numbers together for you so you can see where we, where, what, what...
We have them somewhere.
We have them somewhere. We just didn't, we didn't...
Is it linear?
Bring them for the meeting tonight.
Is it roughly linear? That would be a hundred and sixty units?
Something like that, yeah. But I think, um, if you look at the top of page seven, there's a table on top of page seven, and I'm not sure if those numbers there are with the twelve per acre by right of what we currently have. But I, I think it might be what we currently, what we currently, currently will do, which is like nine hundred and thirty-two units of what we zoning currently have. I think it is.
Okay, one sixty-one versus two twenty-seven, so that's pretty close to just the linear calculation.
Yeah, I think those are the...
I think that's what...
I think those are the correct numbers.
So, I guess the question is, we know that we don't have to build them. We just have to have the property. we know that we don't have to build them, we just have to have the property. We have to, we have to.
Well, no, if you take that as a right, then people can build them, you have to assume that that's what's gonna happen.
But.
We're not, we don't build anything.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not reading that. So what is already being permitted is not going to change size, density, what it is.
It's what it is unless, unless we put a zone and change thermal before they get permitted. No, just because somebody's filing application doesn't mean their grandfather.
Yeah, I know.
So, um, but most of the applicants that we are seeing don't do the by right because they go for the, they go for a, a greater density because they claim they need it for their profit margins.
Would, would this density then allow it even to be greater density with the, with special permit?
No, we would keep the number the same. We have, so seventeen twenty four, we will keep the maximum density the same. Well, that's what I would recommend, to keep the maximum density the same.
So right now, it can, with special permit, it can go up to seventeen?
No, right now, right now it can go, right now in the GDC, we'll take that one, we can have twelve units per acre by right, twenty four by special permit.
Right. And then how would this change? This would go seventeen twenty four?
Yes.
Just the units that are projected to be built on the Driftway, seven, thirty one, sixty one. Will they count toward this?
If it's already there or being, if it's already there, it doesn't really count. Because what you're trying to figure on is the capacity per acre, so it's not gonna change. Say Drew has a, we haven't figured out the capacity, just the Drew site, but that's not gonna change. If there's six units there now, six units are gonna stay.
I understand.
But the capacity might be four. It's just.
So, we have seventy eight units going in through property.
Mm-hmm.
And that does not count towards the twelve hundred and thirty nine units that we're supposed to have. As if that doesn't quite, it's not actually.
No, it's, it's, it's about the density of the, of the zoned length, the, the available density, they haven't used that density.
Okay.
It shouldn't matter, right?
Right, it shouldn't matter.
Theoretical.
Right, it's a theoretical.
It's a theoretical.
Seventeen, right? So, but they didn't use seventeen, but it's still, it's still zoned for seventeen, they just didn't use it, right? You know, if we change things.
So that's, that's counter, that's counter.
But, so then, if they can do seventeen by right and twenty four by special permit, that what you're saying?
Right.
Well, that's a proposal.
That's a, that would be a proposal. But it can't be mixed use, if we can't have.
Right, mixed use isn't counting because the legislation specifically says multifamily.
But you can have multifamily.
I, I understand that, I've made that argument till I'm blue in the face, they understand that. It's just, that's not how the law is written.
I see.
Some of that information that I sent you a couple meetings ago really explains well the unit capacity.
Those, those are articles that you sent us, what you get.
Yes, yes. It explains the unit capacity.
Yeah.
And why?
Doesn't it explain why it's written that way?
No, it doesn't explain why, why the legis.
It, it seems.
Why the legislation passed that way.
Seems counterintuitive.
Yeah.
And if you're trying to create housing units, and you can have all these housing units above multi, you know.
That, that's, I argued that, I said that, and you know, and plus our NDTV district isn't gonna count because they have pedestrian fronted zone.
That's stupid. Which is a little stupid.
Sorry. I mean, because you, you, the desire is to have commercial on the first floor, so you have vibrancy in the area. And the response I got back is that's not the law.
And we don't know that that will change here, we, we think that.
I know, but we're gonna have to tweak this some.
Well, so are you going to go to a representative and ask to change the law?
Absolutely, I, I think. Yeah, I think that one of these issues is that they, if, if you read the Sunday paper, there was a big article about this.
Yes, there was.
And I think one of the issues that this is kinda, I can paint a picture, this is what we want, I think there's a big grid somewhere that's in Situit.
Why are they watching us?
Yeah, watching everybody.
Well, because if you remember, I mean, some of the stuff that I've said is we've, we took, we took into account what was good for Situit. We changed our zoning for limits that we thought was appropriate. We put in the VCF, we have form-based zoning. We were trying to be ahead of the curve by, you know.
Being proactive.
Being proactive, and now, you know, they don't. And people understand that, that some of these people in DHCD understand that, MAPC, they understand it. But it doesn't meet the letter of the law.
It just cause they're looking at us and we went back.
Right, right, no, no, they, I mean, they caught, they said the questions that Shari sent in were excellent questions, and they're policy questions. So that's why it's taken so long to get, get back to us because they have to talk about the policy. We finally got an email today. But they're policy questions that somebody hadn't thought about.
It seems like this Ziggler or whatever his name is, he, he was mentioned in the.
Yeah, he was.
That he's the one driving this bus.
But what's driving the bus is that housing is needed in the Commonwealth. And so they have decreed that you have to have, if you're an MBTA community or adjacent MBTA community, you have to have multifamily housing. And they've determined percentages based on whether you're a rapid transit commuter rail, adjacent community.
I understand all of that.
Et cetera, and so it's.
I just don't understand that here we are building theoretically affordable housing, yet you have to make eighty five thousand dollars a year to be in a one-bedroom affordable unit.
But that.
If, if, yeah, I know the samples and lodges.
Yeah.
But you can't have it both ways.
I know. And I think at some point that will come out of the wash.
I just saw.
So I mean, I know, at some point I'll have to send this, I mean, should we invite Mr. Kenny to one of our meetings on O'Connor?
So, I mean, I, I guess that the next step that I think that I need to do and, you know, is talk to the town administrator. And say, you know, this is what, this is what the memo found, I gave him the memo. You know, the town has to decide how it wants to approach this because they, they absolutely want the grants, to be able to apply for the grants. And, um, there is an application that's being prepared right now um, to be a housing choice community too.
Oh.
Because that enables you to get.
More money.
More money. So, it's just, it's, it's, you have to start thinking about it, and so it's a little bit at a time, so, you know.
You know, yeah, we really have to congratulate ourselves in our top player with our inclusion result, we have other, yeah, so we are, we are, we are. MAPC told us that we are pretty ahead of the curve, you know, in the new way.
As, you know, we have been proactive.
Yes, it has in front of us, and we tried to do what we thought was right for the town. And that's what, why we.
So, so let me ask a question then, if I could, that, that, things that we think are just, you know, completely inconsistent in terms of policy decisions here. If we were to be consistent with what we think is right, where would we be? In terms of meeting this obligation? In words, if we counted the things we think we should count, you know.
If we could count what you, we have a group meeting.
Oh, I bet we would be there.
Yeah, of course we would.
And, you know, I guess, I guess I wouldn't be in an all-fire hurry.
Yeah.
Right? To be the first one on the block to do this, right? Because like I said, laws can be changed, laws can be tweaked, right? All you need is, is one little statement in budget bill, and you can tweak this thing, right? So.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, that, that is the case.
No, so. I think that we should, we can sit on it for a while, as, as you suggest, we can, we can keep having discussions. We know that we.
I wouldn't, I'm not suggesting we sit on it, what I'm suggesting is we be proactive without getting the inconsistencies in these policy decisions addressed. And, and addressed, not just by writing somebody a letter, but by getting our local representatives to try to address this at the State House.
So definitely need to invite. Your state reps, who would help us?
I, I don't even know if we need to invite them, we just, you know, just need to get a meeting going and present the arguments, right? Cause I'm, I'm assuming that other towns are having the same conversation.
Other towns are having the same conversation.
Yeah.
And so, you know, any law that gets passed gets tweaked, right? We, we know that because we're talking about tweaking zoning by laws right now, right? So there's no reason, you know, to, to expect this shouldn't be tweaked when there are, you know, just blatant inconsistencies on the objective versus the implementation. That's right.
Alright, I will set up a meeting with Mr. Boudreau and see if we, if he, you know, how he wants to go about getting our local reps involved.
Where, where's the board of selectmen at? Or is it us?
No, I have not discussed this with, the last time, where does the selectman get the action plan? Because that's what they asked for. We have, it, there has not been a conversation about how the town wants to go.
Okay. And if we're the ones who are going to take this, the town meeting, I, I can't tell you I'm in support of these massive changes without somebody explaining how this all makes sense, right?
Right.
If we've got these big inconsistencies and we say, if you look at what we've actually done compared to what the objective was, we really need that, that this seems to be punitive more than anything else. And there, you know, if you're asking us to take the town meeting, how would, I, I don't know, I'd support it.
Right, we, we need, we would need the support of the board of selectmen, plenty of other people to take this to town meeting. So.
Well, we, we'd first, first and foremost need the support of the planning board, in general, at the, at the town meeting, right?
I, I understand that, I understand.
Regardless of what other people say.
Would you like me to try to get a meeting with the board of selectmen to talk specifically about, about this subject?
I'm happy to talk to anybody, we, we need to, or anything.
Okay, yeah, we need to.
Alright.
I, it just, it just feels to me like we're sort of letting sort of technicalities drive this thing as opposed to what in general is.
I, I understand your intent.
And you get your attention. Yeah, but, but at the end of the day, for people who are dealing with it like us, who understand that there are problems, we've got to clarify it all.
I understand that, I don't think they thought it through.
No, they do, like I said, so that, I know.
I mean, I don't think so, I really don't.
You know, that's the case with a lot of laws, right?
Yeah.
And, and you go back and you tweak them and make them work, right?
Our, our hospital stuff.
And just say, that's what you do here.
All the hospital stuff that we rewrite, we need to write it up.
And I'm, I'm fully in favor of providing housing, right?
Yeah, yes.
But, um, you know, I, I don't like Karen, I feel like we've gone a long way towards creating the, the zoning bylaws that sort of encourage that, and, and, and if.
Yes, and we worked, we've identified that, it's, you know.
If some technicality is gonna say, no, we can't look at that, then, then I'm, I'm, it doesn't make any sense, right?
That definitely doesn't make sense.
So we need to flatten that out.
And Marshfield didn't. Did they submit, yeah?
Didn't submit quite at all. Marshfield, I did six of them, I, we did.
Yeah, there's se- there are several communities, they, they say there's supposed to be some type of seminar between, you know, um, DHCD and MAPC for South Shore communities later this month. I haven't been told anymore than that, but, um.
With DHCD?
Yeah.
Well, that's a big one, we should make a case.
Right.
Not much.
Particularly if it's inconsistency, right?
Yeah, right.
We've just gotta fix some of the little things that are broken.
A lot of them.
Okay.
So we moved right along, so we, we better do our whole business, new business, Ian, can you help me, Mr.?
I moved minutes, um, January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three.
Got it, man. Alright.
Bye.
And I'm sure we spent some money.
I'm going to approve the requisition of one thousand fifty five dollars, Jesse Consulting, peer review services for sixty one of Driftway, and nine hundred seventy five dollars to Maricopa for peer review services for six of the hotels, and for fourteen hundred dollars to Maricopa Corporation for peer review services for Core Purse Estates, for twenty eight hundred dollars to Maricopa for peer review services, seven gold work, start off.
I keep expecting that line up for the typewriter repair.
It's gonna come any day now.
It's gonna come any day now, okay. So, so we, we, so, it's, I, I, Pier forty four is once again, as another service. So please go in, I, I have to say, I'm kind of a master bar, but I'm not the kind where it was in public, um, of, of, the, the, the project. All of your ideas are really fabulous, except they're backed up off a Jericho road, which in the parking lot is not such a great idea. What about a Jericho that backed into your parking space?
Not bad.
So, um, so please look at that, and if we still have, uh, this period of peer review, it's very, very adventurous, I think. I, I don't think the architecture, the architecture company, um, was a little dismissive about concerns about permitting and how long the project would take. We need a feel-good project in like a year, not twenty years of permitting to have, and we do need green space, Doc, it is no doubt about it, we need a green space. Uh, I, I, but I don't know where they watch the car. So, um, I, that's the only thing, so if you go to, um, or what's that, the U of S, if you see.
See, um, they voted four hundred thousand for our playground, checking school, and they voted money for the parking lot and the road that were intended.
If, if you have a chance, listen to the last board of selectmen's meeting, in particular the school budget. This is the first time in many, many, many years that school maintenance is included in the budget, in non-occupy.
It's about time.
It is about time, and it's pretty interesting how they're doing that. Um, it's maybe a third of the way into their presentation, but, um, it's the very first time in my experience, I do remember that there is maintenance in the school budget.
But then again, it's a bottom-line budget, they can move maintenance anywhere they want.
No, this man, Mr. Burkhardt and Dr. Dachey, is that his name?
Doug.
Yeah, Doug. Um, I'm pretty, I'm really very proud that they are able to finally take this off the top order and put it back in the school, but they both feel the loss. I said, but a lot of such would have on those superintendent.
It's true.
Is it taking up the town budget? This school budget's the town?
No, not the capital budget, so, so they, they're including things like, literally things like painting classes and probably not the school budget, it's partly a maintenance budget. Didn't you have a maintenance budget for a long time? That budget. So, you know, so they never go over facilities, and then, you know, you're back, it's all pushed to other, and they don't know what's, you know, how that goes, so. Uh, so we just, now, they, they, for the very first time, have a maintenance line in the budget, who say, I'm not having any of this. Karen.
Um, I'm gonna be writing a memo, and if you want it from the planning board, or I can edit it for myself. So the new Driftway is before the zoning board of appeals next week to, um, for their impermeable limits, they exceed the zoning bylaw. So much the way fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way went in, got a section six finding, this is the attempt that, um, set a new Driftway is going to do. Um, I'm writing a letter in support of, of that.
In support of?
Great in a section six finding for the, for impermeable limitations because it's more than twenty percent in the Zone A, and they are resulting in a decrease in impermeable surface on that site, and they, you know, they have a drainage system with, with some recharge, and you determine that that was acceptable. Karen, do you want to give me a copy of that?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, Karen, we need to, we need, I'll make sure of that, I mean. Do you want it from me or do you want it from the board? Does anybody have a copy?
Well, if it's from the board, then I think we'd have to review it, right?
About.
I can't get it to you till Monday.
Well, like, you know, I'm totally.
I don't have time, I'll get it, it's a less than least thing.
Karen does a beautiful job. Yeah, I, I totally. Yeah, I, I totally, I, I, I think of this, I mean, yes, I'm answering, you know?
I mean, I'm just gonna make the argument that, you know, this is in the DCN, you know, it's also in Salt Marsh and Time Lands, and. I'm gonna put right in the memo that we're, I'm warning, make no determinations. Because you're not the special permit correcting authority for those two things, so. The application didn't have anything on those, but, you know, I'm making it clear, you did not rule on those because your, that was beyond your jurisdiction. And that the, the impermeable limits do make sense because there is a reduction in pavement on that site. To redevelopment, and it's, it's a better situ- it's gonna be a better situation in the end.
Okay, now it's gonna be quarter of a day.
Do you wanna, are you all set, Karen? I'm done. I'll answer today, I, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
I.
Thank you, have a good night.
Adiós. Thank you, Sam.